Okay. The Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in a workshop session as follows. It's August the 17th and it's 2:00 PM in the County Administration Building, 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item is called order, and the second is presentation and discussion of FY 2023-24 county budget. And we will turn it over to the Budget Officer and start the discussion.
It's not a cut thing. One of the major changes that we implemented this year versus last year is that we have gone ahead and prepared, met with the departments and elected officials, and prepared a pre-proposed budget rather to present to you for discussion and questions rather than trying to build the budget as we go through workshops. Questions are more than encouraged from the Commissioners Court. There will be an opportunity for elected officials and department heads to speak. We will probably recognize the elected officials or department heads that we know want to speak as we get to their department. First thing we're going to do is go over the tax rates. Tax rates are calculated by Kristy Rowe, our tax assessor-collector. Please keep in mind she is the only one that I'm aware of certified to calculate these taxes, tax rates, and so if you ask me a really hard question, I don't know. You should have in front of you the current, the most current. We got another certified roll on Sunday from Dana Horton at the Appraisal District. So this includes the most up-to-date information. However, there still are properties under appraisal review board review. Are you able to hear me? Okay. You'll notice at the very top of the sheet, oh, look, I got a pointer. Yes. Okay, we're going to walk. No, I can't walk. Okay. The very top is the current adopted, what was adopted for 2022. The appraised value was $22 billion, 879 million, $121,718. I read that number because that is what shows up on the appraised, the certified appraisal roll. Keep in mind, though, if we get into some of these calculations, that appraised value changes monthly all throughout the year because as you may or may not be aware, that you can file a homestead exemption later on during the year. Changes that value. So just, if you try to tie me down to a very, very specific number, that's going to be my excuse. Okay?
Does that...
That's what we used last year.
Yeah, with those numbers, does that still fit within our 98% assumed collections rate? Have we ever gone outside of that when we assume our 98% property tax collection rate?
Are you asking, have we assumed something else? Or are you asking, have we collected more?
No. What I'm saying is, you're saying that there are still, because homestead exemptions and things still, I mean, I know one of the re, that's, we try to project revenue conservatively on a 98% collected rate.
And that is why.
And that's why.
Because it, the appraised value, what's certified at certification time, changes throughout the year. And so we use one number, we publish that one number, and we don't change it all during the year except that other hat auditing. So the MNO tax rate currently is .389314.
What does MNO mean for the audience?
Maintenance and operations, which is generally used, it's not a finite rule, but is generally used to fund salaries, departmental support, supplies, other charges, repairs and maintenance, and contract and professional services. So the day-to-day activities of the county. The INS rate, it actually stands for interest in sinking, which is our, in our more current language is debt service. Our current debt service rate for 2022 is .040097. Both of those numbers are, excuse me, per hundred dollar valuation. Total tax rate adopted for 2022 is .429411. I promise I'm not going to read the whole thing, but that's what that is at the top. That's where we're at right now. That adopted rate did generate, we're already over, I think, $94,421,0123. That was the revenue estimate at that rate. First line, all right, so the bottom of the spreadsheet is all 2023 tax rates. You'll notice the appraised value is the same for all the rates. MNO rate, we start with the no new revenue rate of .335374 and the debt service rate of .04714. That debt service rate is the same. It's calculated by Kristy, and it does not change during this whole process. The debt service fund revenue was estimated using, has been estimated and balanced using that rate. The total tax rate is the MNO plus the INS rate. The total general fund revenue at 98% collection rate is, if we adopt that tax rate, that's what the revenue budget for general fund will be. I usually round off the last three numbers, sometimes the last five.
So it'll generate 2.675...
That's the next column.
...million dollars more.
That column increase and request over tax year 2022. So yes, if we adopt the no new revenue rate, we will bring in an estimated $2.6 million more than the $94 million in 2022.
And that is predominantly as a result of property that now exists that did not exist in the prior, on January 1 of the prior year?
Of 2022. That is true. I took, I'm sorry.
That's a... Go ahead, I'll crunch the numbers.
I took that rate, oh, Charles, your battery's dead. Okay, now we're going to red. Okay. So I took that no new revenue rate, and you can see in the formula, I basically just gave options by adding .005 to the no new revenue rate and just kept doing that. And then there's a stop at de minimis rate. I don't even want to attempt to explain that one. It does not calculate as exactly as I would like it to, but that is the de minimis rate calculated. That rate would bring in five point, well, basically five million more. The yellow is the voter-approved rate adjusted for sales tax. That would bring, that current rate would bring in 7.6 million more than 2022. Nina, go ahead and scroll down. Then we have green, blue, and pink. The area between the yellow and the green, I basically took the MNO rate and added .005 just to provide options. Otherwise, all I have is the colored, you know, this just gives you some other options on what you might want to be. The green is the voter-approved rate adjusted for sales tax. Thank you, Charles. With the 2020 unused increment. The unused increment for people that don't look at this every day is the difference between, I had it on another page, is the difference between the voter-approved tax rate and the adopted tax rate. For 2020, it's that simple. There was no unused increment in 2020 because that was the first year we had it. Okay? So that break, that gap, this range, there we go, the range that we have here is essentially four cents unused increment. 2020 unused increment will roll off and not be available to us after this year. The unused increment, or excuse me, the increment rate is what you can go use and go over and above the voter approval rate without having an automatic election. So this is, the green is just one year of unused increment. The blue is the unused, includes the unused increment for 2020 and 2021. 2021 was about a penny. Excuse me, a penny and a half. And then the very bottom number is the voter-approved rate with using the increment from 2020, 2021, and 2022. That is this rate right here, which is .482283, is the maximum rate you can adopt without automatic voter approval election. That rate brings in 30 million more than last year.
Question?
Yes, sir.
The unused increment, you lose 2020, but then regain if there is a difference between voter-approved rate and adopted rate this year, and that rolls into the equation. So it's a three-year calculation rolling forward.
Yes, sir. However, Kristy has also warned me, as far as I can tell, now remember, I mentioned, I don't know if you've ever tried to do an IRS tax return. Yeah. Adjusted gross income is almost as bad as some of this, but I'm pretty sure you would have to adopt a tax rate between the yellow and the no new revenue to have any unused increment. I don't think it's available to you all the way, that unused increment would be the amount available all the way to the pink.
Right, without the add-in of the...
Yes, so if you were going to try to guess what next year's unused increment, I would suggest it depends on what we adopt up to the yellow.
But that would be one-third of what the calculation is for the total that gives you the bottom line that's pink in color.
Yes, although it's weighted, when you say one-third, it's a sum, so...
Well, I will say this, the legislation that I saw in the last session, in the regular session, was oriented towards narrowing that range down because it's a three-and-a-half percent revenue cap. But in reality, what we're saying this year is, is we could increase revenue by over 30%
Before a mandatory election.
Before we had a mandatory election.
Yes, sir. That's a lot different.
Lots of headroom. Okay. And the other thing was, is on the debt service rate?
Yes, sir.
We were little, just barely over four cents per hundred this year that we're finishing up, and we issued $40 million in additional debt, and our debt service rate did not go up significantly. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And I guess that's because the debt service rate is not capped by the revenue cap?
The counties are...
I'm sorry, not the debt service rate, the debt service revenue is not capped by the three-and-a-half percent calculation.
Correct. We, as a county, are capped at a total tax rate of 80 cents. We're nowhere near there.
Heaven forbid.
Exactly. Where was I going? Oh.
Thanks.
Increment, next year, the unused increment will not be calculated as, from what I understand, as a tax rate. It will be calculated as a dollar amount because from a mathematical standpoint, calculating at a tax rate, when your certified values go up, so does your tax, the increment tax rate, unused increment rate. But they didn't want that. They want a dollar value. So it'll change a little next year.
That was the legislation I was speaking of.
Okay.
Because I think that was changed in the 88.
I can't keep track of the sessions, but yes. Do we have any other questions? So now we're going to go over the proposed budget, and basically you have what each tax rate revenue would bring in to fund this, to fund the budget. So now we are moving to the pre-proposed. Nina, do you want to hand them out? And I'm going to talk your ear off for a while, and then Nina's going to talk your ear off for a while. If you get bored, stand up. Do you want to make it a little bigger, Nina, when you get a chance? So what we have done, we have prepared a summary of requested budget. The first column is the adopted 2023, 2223 budget. The second column is the budget we are currently speaking about. It's not officially proposed yet, so we're talking about what we have put together to be considered at proposal. Revenues are 100, estimated to be at 150 million. That includes very little use of fund balance. The only fund balance that we anticipate here using is the 6 million for contingency, 5 million for indigent health care because we have to set aside 8% of our tax revenue to fund indigent health care if we run out and have to go ask the state for reimbursement. Brazos County, for the 28 years I've been here, has never run out of those funds. So rather than continuing to tax for that 8% every year, we went ahead and set aside 5 million, we did this last year, to use that to continue to fund what is required to be budgeted but is not generally spent. Does that make sense? We're going to do that. And then we also, there's also some restricted fund balances in that 13 million because about 2 million for various other activities that we collect fees and deposit into the general fund, and the expenditures are in the general fund, too. Go ahead and scroll down, Nina.
Before we leave the revenue section?
Yes, sir.
Significant delta on taxes?
Yes, sir.
8.35 million, and also intergovernmental, 8 million.
So tax, are you asking what that is?
Yeah, just if you give us a...
You're talking about the 8.3 on taxes?
Okay.
Is because we adopted a budget based on a proposed tax rate that was not adopted.
Gotcha. And that's the difference between the proposed tax rate last year and the actual tax rate that was the no new revenue?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And intergovernmental, the prime difference there is ARPA. As far as we can tell, we will not qualify for revenue replacement out of the American Recovery, I don't remember what the P is.
Plan.
Plan Act, yes, in 24, 2324. So we have recognized as much revenue of that as we think that we will be able to. So that was about $8 million a year, 7.2 for 2223. What were you looking for? A pen? Pencil? Expenditures. Current budget, excuse me, current requested budget is at $162,882,857. A difference between revenue and expenditures of, da-da-da-da-da-da, scroll down, Nina. There you go, $12,383,383,883. Where did that 12 million come from? That's what we're going to go over next. For, we included back in June, or May, we agreed to include a four-and-a-half percent cost of living allowance for employees of Brazos County. That four-and-a-half COLA plus the benefits, the COLA is 2.6 million, the benefits associated with the COLA is 700,000. The accrued salary, this is an accounting thing, but it still has to be budgeted for. It's ironic, in the 2223 budget, there was exactly 260 days. So no accrual was needed, but in 222324, there's 261 days. So we had to budget another 318,000. Employer contribution, when we spoke with our consultant back in June, it was estimated or encouraged that we need to increase our contribution to health insurance by 3%. So that is estimated at 451,000. That 3% has since changed to 5%, but rather than go and add that individually in each budget, we budgeted a transfer to the Health and Life Fund, which is two rows down, of a million dollars. That way, if we have four-and-a-half million available in the Health and Life Fund, but we are, because they changed from 3% to 5%, we wanted to go ahead and make another million available so that we can continue to pay our claims as they come in during the year. Row 34 on the screen, the increase in retirement going from 16.75% to 17% after the COLA is only $43,000.
Can we, can we go back one more of that transfer to Health and Life Fund?
Yes.
Okay. Did, looking at closing this year, are we going to have a surplus?
Four-and-a-half million.
Okay. There.
Yes.
And so the, but we're adding a million in to that just in case?
Yes, sir.
So it's actually...
It's available. It doesn't mean we have to transfer.
Right, right, right. But it's a, yeah, because we have to have it available to be able to act on it unless it's an emergency.
Well, let's further define that. Not only available, it has to be budgeted.
Okay, and budgeted, okay. So that is our, it's ultimately, you could think of that as a contingency?
Yes, sir.
In that particular area of our budget?
Budget.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. OPEB, you may recall, we actually sent $2 million to our trust fund for other post-employment benefits in 2122, so we didn't send anything in 2223. We're budgeting to go back to sending a million dollars in 2324. And that is because our OPEB current actuarially assumed liability is approximately 73 million. Increase in community support.
Do we have a, do we have an amortized figure on that by any chance where we are?
Divided by 20? No, I don't.
Okay. But that would be a rough, okay, so roughly cocktail napkin calculation is 20 years?
Generally, that's what TCDS uses for our retirement, if I remember correctly. So yes, although I don't think 20 years is going to cut it for 73 million. That's only 20 million we put in. That's a lot of interest we'd have to get. But...
And it assumes that...
What is it really going to be?
It assumes that those costs don't go up either.
No, there's an inflationary in the actuarial determination.
Right, but what I'm saying, that 7, okay, it's in the determination for the 73 million.
I think it's four-and-a-half percent, but that might be the interest rate assumed.
Okay, thanks.
Increase in community support. There are some, we call community support, like the Appraisal District and MHMR, that technically are not at our option. If they request more, we have to fund it, and those totaled 180,000. Also, emergency services out in the county is included in that increase. Now, these aren't the budgets. These are the increases in the budgets that make up that 12 million dollars. We follow in there?
Those are basically nondiscretionary.
Generally, yes. And then the position reclassifications, deletions, salary increases and decreases. Position reclassifications are usually very minimal actual costs. We did several of those to make sure that we could get all our employees to the living wage. Everybody is budgeted at at least living wage now, and that affected quite a few departments. That, it also includes any increases that we added for positions that are adding additional duties. We have a couple of positions that are taking on more duties, and so therefore there's a budget increase in that. Now, whether they're actually, whether they actually make that, it's determined by their supervisor during the year. Juvenile, and this becomes one of those, I'm probably going to, I'm definitely going off script. So juvenile, TJJD, which is Texas Juvenile Justice Department, is sending us $246,000 to supplement the salaries of our juvenile department. Next year, they're sending us 500,000, but that doesn't pay for all of it. We have to still pick up the difference between 25%, our benefit rate is about 25%. That's FICA, retirement, health insurance, and workers' comp, and a couple of other payroll fees. But they're only going to pick up 8% of that. So we have to match, and we have a required match with TJJD, and so therefore we're anticipating possibly, assuming all the positions are full, all year long, $684,000 for that.
That's our part.
That's our part. Department increases from inflation, those are actually the, like, we increased utilities. I know that was 250,000 because we just, we just cut in the July bills and we needed, I don't know if y'all remember, you just did a budget amendment to increase budgets for utilities. So 336 is actually, we're attributing it to inflation. We found that last year, goods like food and other office supplies and things increased, but this year, more services increased. So 336,000 for inflation and also just other departmental increases. And we actually can tell you, we're going to go by a department here in a little bit. And then new one-time-only purchases and non-capital projects. So you may be aware that our capital threshold, capitalization threshold, is 5,000 with a three-year life. There's things that we have to do that don't meet that criteria. For example, roofs is one of them. That's maintenance, things like that. Or HVAC controls, those are in there, chairs, desks. We have a list, as a matter of fact, let's go ahead and, in the interest of brevity, we're going to go ahead and hand it out. Y'all can look at it as you want. We're going to have this workshop today. We're going to have a capital workshop Monday, which was posted a little while ago at 2:00. And then we have the opportu, we will also have another workshop on Tuesday, and we have an open opportunity to have additional workshops on Wednesday and Thursday of next week. If you find, so we can continue to go over what we've included in the proposed budget, if you have any questions with regards to that, we can go over that list. But a lot of it is things that just wear out, that aren't over $5,000. The list we just went over is 11 million of the 12 million that we are currently short. Total new positions added to the requested budget. We added 11 positions for a total of a million dollars. They are listed here. There's the Assistant General Counsel in the county judge's budget, a project manager in the county judge's budget, Commissioners Court Receptionist. We added two non-departmental, excuse me, two transition training positions to the non-departmental budget because we have found that the ability to have somebody put in there two weeks' notice and have somebody come in and train during those two weeks is invaluable, and so this allows, this provides funding, two positions worth of funding to allow all county departments to do that so that, and they will be managed by the HR Department, and a department can call HR and say, hey, I've got somebody leaving, I want to be able to allow some training time. Now, the hard part's going to be finding somebody to replace them within those two weeks. That's always a problem, but this allows some overlap. Fleet shop assistant director, which is our, part of our succession planning, budget analyst, so the budget, the number of personnel working on the budget every year is now three with this position. Spencer, I don't know if you remember, we hired her this year. She's in, she will be moving to that position. Associate Court One Program Coordinator, we have a job, we can go through these positions in more detail. Again, I don't know if we'll get to it today. That includes job descriptions and what they're anticipated to do, as well as the data that we used to help prioritize, or yes, to help us prioritize which positions to go ahead include and which ones to not include. Associate Court One Program Coordinator, we have a job description that will probably better reflect what that position is going to do, but it's going to help with those arrested or accused to complete the indigent defense paperwork in case they need a court-appointed attorney that the county actually pays for. It'll also... for. It'll also, the goal is to help with our ankle monitoring program, to help monitor that and make sure that we are getting the best out of those programs that we can. Juvenile Custodian, it's a halftime position. I don't know if you're aware, we added a detention wing, another detention wing, but we, we need a custodian to be able to clean it. And then we added the ex, excuse me, Exposition Center Receptionist and for, because we found that the receptionist was working on a lot of purchase orders, purchasing activities, and not actually, and some job descriptions and job duties, and they were in the public. We kinda wanna get that off of the public countertop. And then we also went ahead and added the insurance and flex fee for an expo event coordinator. We did not fund the salary, but the position is there, and we went ahead and added the insurance so that we can fund it during the middle of the year if we want to. So it's, it's only seventeen thousand. Questions?
It's eleven, so that's eleven additional positions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, how many positions were requested?
Twenty-two. I just realized there's half.
And were any of these positions that are being requested, where we have, I know we, we've got a, a large number of vacancies in budgeted positions.
Yes, sir.
Are, are any of these in departments or areas where they have a significant number of open positions?
Significant being based on the number of positions in the department. I would suggest the only ones maybe is expo. There's been some turnover out there that, that have, but it's, they're hiring. It's just...
Not the positions that were created.
Yeah, not, not in those functions.
But that's just kind of a revolving door of reality of being able to find employees. They're coming and going.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So you said there were twenty-two positions, but you're only suggesting fifteen, eleven?
And we have a list of which ones we didn't put in here. We'll go over that, too.
Okay.
Do you wanna go over that now? Or...
Is there a...
We're gonna go by department, and we can...
We'll do it then.
Yeah, and some want to speak to them, some don't. So, okay. Nina, you're up. We do have about twelve million dollars funded in the general fund that will not be spent this year, that we are rolling. I know that's such an awkward term, but we are going to budget again in next year's. So if you were to look, but it's, it's technically coming out of fund balance, because what we didn't spend this year rolls into fund balance, and that's about another twelve million. Nine point four of that being for the Road and Bridge Department. So projects that they've started, but they will not be able to finish by the end of this budget year.
That's the top, that's the top set on this sheet here.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to pass out the departmental sheets. That way it's a little easier to see.
Okay.
Just bringing back teaching days.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we will have a short recess here in a little bit. We're waiting on somebody to arrive to do that. Do you wanna do that now, Judge, before we start going through the departments? I don't think it's time yet, but if you want a few minutes ahead of time.
Yeah.
You wanna do that now?
Well, we can, we can continue on for a little while.
Okay, we'll try to get through your department.
Thank you for not falling asleep yet, 'cause I know sometimes this is stuff you don't wanna hear, or it's yawning information. So we're gonna go over the departmental budgets, and we're gonna go through what has increased and decreased. You'll see the red that's, it's gonna be noted as decreases, and you're gonna see quite a few of that. And because some of the decreases, that means some of the big projects that were budgeted this year as one-time only, they are completed. And so we'll go into a little bit more detail about that. For the County Judges' Budget, you'll see that there's an increase of four-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand, and this is also contributing to the, the COLA that was awarded so far, as well as Assistant General Counsel with operational expenses. That means desk, telephone, anything that position needs to complete their duties. Project Manager with the operational expenses. This ProCore software, this is a project management software that was under Road and Bridges Department. For next year, we're de, we're taking it out of the Road and, Road and Bridges Department, put into the County Judges', since that's where the Project Manager's position's located. And Open Record Software, this is a new software that the court had approved for them to go ahead and get the, start getting it implemented. It has not been finished yet, so we're gonna have to budget for next year. And with that, it increased it by four-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars. The Veteran Services, that increased by eleven thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-three, and that is going to be because the part-time position that was not filled this year, we didn't order the furniture, 'cause we didn't know what we needed. And so that's gonna be budgeted as well as next year, as well as the three, the four-and-a-half percent COLA along with benefits. The Pre-Trial Bond Supervision, this houses three, three positions that help support the CSCD as well as ours to help with the pre-trial bond. It only increased by ten thousand dollars, and that's due to the COLA increase. The Budget Office, you'll see a decrease of seventy, seventy-three thousand dollars, and this is due to moving one of the Bud, Budget Analysts that was budgeted in that department.
Five times fast.
I know, Budget Analysts. Budget, budget, budget. Removing that position to the County Auditor, but we're only leaving the insurance just in case something happens. The PBCS...
Or if Commissioners Court makes a decision to add the Budget Office.
So the position's being left in there, but the money's getting shifted.
Right.
Got you.
Did you hear that, Commissioner Watson?
I did not.
We're leaving the Budget Officer position in there, but we're shifting the funds to the Auditor's Office to go with the, the people right now. If y'all choose to create a Budget Office during the middle of the year, the position's there. We just have to add the funding.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we can't put, add a position to there.
Let's see which ones next. Also in that budget, we left in a, a contract service to help with our budgeting software. We're working on capital projects to merge the two systems, budgeting and as well as our financial planning into one, and we're able to do that. We're just holding off until the new year to see if we can implement it next year. And it could be between several different, like High Street or PBCS, but we reserve some money for that. Commissioners Court Administration, we have one receptionist with operational expenses, as well as an increase to retirees' health insurance. This is continually increased every single year, and so that's one of the increases. For non-departmental, this is where we added the two full-time transition positions, as well as the one-million-dollar OPEB, and we are looking for a de minimis policy next year, contracting out to try to help us create a de minimis policy. The Boomville Cemetery, this is a small increase of forty-five hundred dollars. It's because of the cost of flags. And due to the weather and the wear and tear, we tried to replace them two to three times a year, and so that's due to that, as well as the maintenance in the, at the park hasn't increased. Contingency, I know Katie stated that we budgeted six million. That's where you're gonna see the increase of one point two. Community Support, this is going to be our outside agencies, and that's where the one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars that you saw previously, that's where it's housed at. County Fire Protection, it increased due to our city contracts with the EMS. We have no idea what that's gonna be, so we had to cushion it a little bit until we received the contracts from City of Bryan and City College Station. Court Support Criminal, this increased by seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand, uh, decreased, sorry, by seven-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. And this is because capital murders usually take more than one year. Instead of keeping, say, a million dollars in every year, we decreased it because usually takes three years for a capital murder to go through. So we divided it by three years, and that's where you see the decrease.
We don't currently have any on the books. Coming up.
As well as the Second Administrative Pill has increased as well. Court Support Civil, this is where you'll have our...
Autopsies.
Autopsies, yes, I can remember. And right now, since we don't have an ME created, we contracted with Travis County, and their contract had increased by ten percent. And that's where that increase had came from, two-hundred-thousand dollars. Court Support Charles Protective Services had increased by fifty thousand due to past history. We noticed that every single year, we have been adding additional expenditures mid-year to support the costs, and so we went ahead and increased it this next year. The following few have, we left alone. Court Support Guardianship, we noticed that we're not spending as much. We took away fifty thousand dollars. Alternative Dispute is increased by ten thousand.
They're gonna be here next week, right?
Uh, that is questionable. Fleet Shop, Light Equipment, this department houses all the technicians, as well as equipment for our light fleets, our patrol vehicles, or facility shop vehicles. Nothing heavy, but most of our light vehicles. That has increased by one-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand dollars due to the cost of operational expenses, tires, oil, all those parts, as well as additional Assistant Director with operational expenses. Collections increases due to the COLA. Elections Administration has increased one-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. Last year, y'all had granted a warehouse position, but it was only funded for nine months only. This year, it's increased because we're funding it for a full year. This is also an increase because we have three elections this next year, and additional equipment that, additional equipment that needed, needed for the pole pads.
I think we need to take a break right now.
Yes. We're gonna go ahead and take a little break, and we'll reconvene, say, about thirty, forty-five minutes.
About thirty minutes.
Okay.
Meeting with Congressman, and his schedule is pretty tight, so it's important to make...
Thanks. So, we're gonna take a break.
We don't want Judge to miss any of our lovely ideas, so we will stop.
We're coming back into session. It's two-twelve, and I think Nina, you were up.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, it's three-twelve in the afternoon.
Huh?
It's three-twelve, but we can keep everybody to six if you want.
Colorado time.
Y'all can feed us. Okay, so where we left off, welcome back, everybody. Hope you had a nice little break. Election, so where we left off, we were talking about election administration. Like stated prior, we have three elections this next year, so there's gonna be a cost increase regarding pruning, as well as additional items needed for the pole pads. For voter registration, this was in a different special revenue fund. Since there's no more funds coming for this particular item, we had a county fund it, and so that's why there's an increase. American Rescue Plan Revenue Act.
Actually, voter registration isn't gonna be funded by the county. That amount that's been budgeted is actually budgeted by the Secretary of State. We have to go ahead and budget it so that when they spend it and we get reimbursed, it's available for them to spend first.
Oh.
Yes, correct. Yeah, yes.
So there's a revenue associated with that one.
There's my thing.
Yeah, you're welcome.
What she said.
Yeah.
For American Rescue Plan Revenue Replacement, this is where it's a decrease, because we did move twenty million to the general, to the capital, general capital fund to support three major construction projects that we have previously approved. For County Treasurer, the increase is going to be fifty-one thousand dollars, five hundred. This is because, because she is requesting additional chair replacements, and this is gonna be revolving thing each year because of all the...
I said he.
Oh, he?
Yeah.
Because of the, the wear and tear, because of the public coming in nonstop. Let's see, and of course, the COLA. For Risk Management, there is an increase of one-hundred-six-thousand
It's my understanding that Risk Management doesn't wanna speak to the position that they requested that we did not include in the budget. I'm gonna go ahead and hand out that list, so you'll be aware of the positions that were requested that we did not put in there. Phil, you know, you can always talk to the Risk Manager if you want to, to get more information on their needs.
While she's passing that out, what is included is the evacuation sign holders for all county buildings, and I believe that these signs will light up if electricity goes down, so we all know which direction to evacuate. Thank you, Peter, equipment for our velocity system, as well, last year, court approved us to increase our deductible amount, so this essentially increased the amount that we're gonna have to expense, and so that's a portion of it, as well as a consultant fee to go out to see if we, for a security consultant, for outside firm to come help us to see what we can do to secure certain building, county buildings. For the Tax Office, there's an increase of one-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and includes chair replacement again for employees and in the lobby, as well as employee certification requirements for, for, for employees that are currently. Information Technology, you're gonna see two different accounts. The first division is going to be his administration division. This means anything that his current staff needs to operate. There's only an increase of two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, which is majority of the supply increases, as well as the COLA. For Information Technology, this division's gonna support the county. So any items that printer replacement, computer replacement, Oracle, different IT software that support the county, this is where it's gonna come from. There's an increase of one-hundred, one million, sixteen thousand, and this is mostly because of the non-capital projects that has been requested, that do not meet that capital threshold that Katie was talking about, over five thousand. And so this is where we put the, the projects under.
For example, the expansion of Service Now.
HR, Human Resources, there's an increase of one-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand dollars. This is to retain a consultant regarding retention. I think in the past, we have discussed how can we retain employees, and so we're gonna look for outside help to help us with that. SO and Juvenile, drug testing due to the, the amount of employees we're trying to hire. As well as the County Auditor, there's an increase of nine-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand. We moved the Budget Analysts from the County Budget Office, as well as added additional analysts to support helping us do the budget. High Street Contract, the court-approved debt book software, as well as the ECH, ECS contract.
Which means Extended Cloud Services. It's our contract with High Street to help us manage the quarterly updates to our software.
Purchasing has an increase of six-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, and you'll see his increases in contract services. He has requested three-hundred-thousand dollars for certain demolition of buildings in the county, as well as a construction consultant to come help us regarding...
Design Standards.
Right.
Wants to kinda set up some design standards.
And for copy replacement.
Yes.
Facility Services is six-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-dollar, nine-hundred-and-ninety-two increase.
Please note, this department requested a landscaper position that we did not include in the requested budget. Like we said, there was twenty-two positions requested, and we have put in eleven. What we anticipate happening, let me explain this. So we anticipate pro- So we anticipate proposing the budget September fifth, and possibly voting on the budget and the tax rate on September nineteenth. In between the now and then, if we find, if, if things are wanted to be, if Commissioners Court wants to add things to the budget, they are more than welcome at the adoption of the budget to make a motion to add whatever to the budget. You could add another position. We will give you the numbers. You could add software, you could add anything you want, you know, and, and it'll come to a vote and be decided whether it'll be added to the budget or not.
Can we back up one? Everything's zipped. I was looking at some, some things, and things went through purchasing really fast.
Speak up, please.
There wasn't a, there wasn't a breakdown, I already can catch, it's not on the sheet here, a breakdown on the contractual services under purchasing?
Correct.
There was one under auditor.
It's design standards.
Six hundred and thirty-six standard, but there, but there wasn't any notation out here on purchasing.
There's three hundred thousand for destroying some buildings. I might do it myself.
Okay, fine.
There's one other.
The, for the, there was for the demolition of various buildings. None of this benefits purchasing in particular. We just did it on behalf of the county.
Well, everything has to get parked somewhere.
Sure. And so the other part was the design standards for the county commissioner. So when we're constructing a building, we have certain standards. Facility Services wants to see these kind of AC and heating units. They want to see this particular ceiling, acoustic ceiling tile, this particular type of carpet, so we can hand that design standards to the architect, whoever it may be, and they have, those pieces already done. There's no, we get disparities between buildings and so forth. So that's the intent of that. It's expensive, but I think that in the long run, it will help.
Right.
It'll save county personnel time, and we'll get a better standardized product. I think A&amp;M and, and other facilities, large facilities that have multiple buildings like that utilize that structure.
And, and, okay, three hundred K was demo, and the three hundred and thirty-nine K was design standards?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, hey, I'm just busy trying to stick.
We killed several trees.
I'm just trying to stick with one piece of paper at a time.
Ah, well, and we, I just tried to cut and paste it because it's on the facilities, and it's not supposed to be.
Okay.
One mistake out of fifty pages, we're good. That's a plus.
Yes.
For facility services, and yes, if they're, I'm trying to list the most important items on here, the biggest increases, but there are some smaller items that we did not list in here, but you can, you'll find them on this list regarding the one-time-only items. This is going to be more descriptive, and so always refer back to this if you have any questions, or if you're missing something. We have it here. For facility services, increased by six hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, and it's due to some one-time-only projects, like your HVACs replacements, smaller items, and so, which is not listed on here, but I could tell you a few right quick. Like the freeze protection at the expo, that's seventy-five thousand. Building repair at the Boomville Park, that's thirty-five thousand.
No, no, now I get it. On the sheet that I have here, facility services has the replacement copier, the three hundred and the three forty-one.
For some reason, it won't let us copy and paste for right now.
So then there's, okay, so this one is, where do I find the annotations for facility services?
On a different piece of paper.
Okay, so I'm going to have to.
The one with the lines.
We just can add everything all in on this.
I got you, okay. So that moves up to that category.
And there also is like fire alarm upgrades, things that are mostly maintenance, but are contract services, since our employees do not do it. Okay? For landscaping, there's an increase of sixty-four thousand. That's due to a contract for residential property, so we contract out for lane services, and that was an increase of forty thousand dollars for lawn services, not lane services. Facility services parking garage, this building's not owned by the county. One day it might be, but we decreased the funding for the past couple of years, we took it away. For county attorney, you'll see an increase of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars. This is due to the COLA. District attorney, you see an increase of seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars. This is because of the COLA and a reclassification of their attorneys. District attorney child support increases due to COLA. District clerk administration increases due to COLA. Their jury services increases due to COLA, the cost of, cost of living. County clerk, the increase of forty-seven thousand is due to the cost of living adjustments. County clerk, increase for the cost of vital preservations. Eighty-fifth District Court, you see a decrease of seventy-nine thousand dollars. This is because the last couple of years, IT has been working on audio and visual upgrades, and this project is hopefully, fingers crossed, it's been promised pretty much that it is going to be completed. And so that is the cost of what we were working on to upgrade the audio visual. This is also, there's also an increase for the court reporters.
Trevor, are you in here? Is it going to be done?
Yeah, it's over.
Okay.
IT representative is shaking his head, yes.
Nodding, yes, good. Okay. Only five thousand left, guys, okay.
Two-seventy-second, the increase is due to COLA and reclassification of a position. Same thing with three sixty-first, COLA, cost of living and reclassification. For juvenile court referee, this is a cost of living increase of eleven thousand. Associate Judge Number One, they have requested a position of what Katie was describing of a program monitor coordinator. We're still working on the wording of the title with operational expenses, and this position's going to help with ankle monitoring, trying to get the paperwork completed for indigent, and maybe some other duties assigned. Their job description is.
You actually have their job, the job description. I handed it out at the break with the position, and this position has been included.
Yes. For the court specialty, county specialty court program, it used to be known as a drug court, the increase is due to the, the interlocal agreement with, with the county and the CSED to cover for two positions over there. Associate Judge Number Two, administration increases due to COLA thirty-two thousand. County court at law, the increase is due to COLA of thirty-three thousand. For this department, they divide three, they have three divisions regarding staff, support, departmental support.
Judicial.
And judicial. County court at law, number two, we.